Yes.
Key points, but.
Yes. Can't like interject.
Good evening, everybody. We'd like to start tonight's meeting and welcome to our committee, the whole meeting for Monday, December one, twenty twenty five. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met all official notifications compliance. Roll call, please.
Shelley Mullen.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Laura Gapski. Virtual.
Virtual.
She's on, Laura. She has it on me, I believe.
Okay.
Here.
There she is.
I don't know why my camera's not working, but I can hear everyone. Thank you.
Hey, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right, Catherine Gammon.
Here.
Sarah Schuber McCone excused. Nick Schumacher here.
President Steve Olson.
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is forward, is to be forwarded to the recommendation for final approval at the regular school board meeting on Monday, December eighth, two thousand twenty five. So first on the agenda tonight are any comments by our members of the public.
Yeah. No.
There are not. Next up is our report from our superintendent.
Great. I have one informational item tonight. I have a couple other informational items next week, but tonight we're going to start with four corners. We have some students and our principal four corners that have some updates, so we're excited. We cannot wait to hear.
I told you.
Yep.
It's a best-sounding way to do it. Yeah. It's awkward. Searings. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. And good evening, members of the board. It's welcome to winter, right? It was like we got kicked into the deep end of the pool. Um, so this is my first visit to the year already, and we're almost at the end of the first trimester, which is is pretty amazing. We've had a really good really good start to the year. It's been very, very busy. It's been very good. Let's see if I can make this work again.
Yes.
Um, so I want to talk just briefly about, you know, what our goal is this year. And really, as always, our goal is that we want all of our students before they leave our building to be reading at at grade level. That's definitely the bottom line of of what's important to us. Um, so as far as writing a goal this year, we determined that we need to take a look at the students who are scoring at the um, summer risk or the outlet category in terms of reading on the fast bridge or the AIMS web, depending upon what grade level they are, and really looking to make sure that they're they're making um, aggressive growth, because we know that they can't just make typical growth in one year. They really need to make more than one years of growth in order to to catch up to their grade level peers. And we determine that at the K one level, it's really about the reading plan. And we want all students to be exited from a reading plan. In order to get there, they've got to demonstrate proficiency, um, in oral reading fluency. And by the third grade, it's on AIMS as well as the forward exam. So that's kind of where we are. Um, as far as a few of our celebrations, so our student attendance is really good this year. It's currently at ninety six percent, which is up from this time last year. Um, we've got sixty six percent fewer students this year in K three who required a reading plan as compared to last year. So that's very, very impressive. I think that's huge to the work that our early childhood and K one teachers really did this year in in ensuring that we needed fewer reading plans at at the second and third grade level. Um, and I know Kate, as you're going to talk a little bit about school report cards, and I emailed her to make sure it wasn't going to steal steal any of her thunder. Um, but we were happy to see that we increased our overall report card score um, by two point six points, which is pretty exciting. Um, our overall achievement increased by five points. This is a point that we were really ecstatic about is that in mathematics, um, for our one of our target groups, our students uh, who live in poverty, they went up by nine point six points in math. So we are closing that gap in mathematics between um, our two groups, which is is phenomenal. And our growth in ELA was higher for our target group than for our non our non-target group. So again, we're starting to to see that gap close, which is definitely what we want to see. Um, and then in terms of our fall data, which we're almost coming up on the on the winter testing time already after the winter break. So this fall, we saw that seventy two percent of our students in K five were above the fortieth percentile in reading. And seventy five percent of our students in K five were at or above the fortieth in math. So that gives us a really good foundation to work from. Um, knowing that our kids are coming in, not releasing a huge summer slide, which is which is really good news. There we go. And we turned forty.
Yes, that's right.
So, yeah, it seems like eons ago. So in September, we had our our fortieth anniversary, and we had a a big celebration. We invited we had lots of former Falcons come back, lots of alumni come back. We had a really nice turnout. Um, it was kind of yucky weather. We had planned this big outdoor barbecue, and then uh, Mother Nature decided, no, I'm going to rain and be foggy. So we moved it all inside, which was, it actually turned out really well. Um, and it was fun. We opened up the the time capsule and got to pull everything out and see what was in there. There was some stuff from originally from nineteen eighty five. So we got to go through, you know, like the plans for when the school was built and how much it cost. And that was really interesting and eye opening to look at. Um, and then the the last time that they opened it was at the twenty fifth, and so we were able to go through like some of the things that the students had put in and and, you know, what they thought life would be like now, which was, you know, we're all in flying cars, of course, you know, that's that's what they thought. But it was it was pretty cool. Um, and then our teachers had their classes, of course, then make some things to add to the to the time capsule. We also had some of our staff write a letter to the person in their position in the future, you know, what advice would they give? Um, I added a few things from, you know, a big a big piece of in between the last time this was opened and now was, you know, COVID, and what did that look like? And knowing that, you know, at some point, that's going to live in the history books. So, you know, kids in the future in AP US history are going to about the pandemic and and what that was like. So it was a really, it was a great time, and it was great to see so many future or former Falcons and families and and staff. Um, as far as some of the challenges in our building, you know, I'm sure this is not anything different than than what you've heard of other buildings is, you know, change is hard. And changing over with the uh, new reading curriculum, it's really, it's it's much more rigorous. It, you know, I think that as the longer the teachers are working with it, they're seeing the benefits of it. Um, they're working exceptionally hard and they're doing a great job. One of the things that we put in place in our building, we really valued that PLC time, and so making sure that staff had as much time as possible to collaborate with one another and really go through and talk about, okay, so what does this look like in terms of, you know, what does the writing look like? How does that tie into the reading lesson? How does that tie into, you know, the phonics and things like that? Um, and as well, really having a lot of support from our instructional coaches and they have to work with our individual PLCs to help them do some planning and kind of, you know, sorting through all of those those things to make it a coherent um, day for our kids. So it's been really good. Scheduling, of course, you know, that's always always tough. And I think with our, we have a unique situation with our multi multi-age grade levels. And just figuring out, okay, so what does that look like to make sure that our kids are getting instruction at grade level and reading and math? How do we schedule those interventions? Who's going to do those? When, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, and I think our our teaching staff do a really, really great job of working together to figure out, okay, how can we make this work? What does this look like? When does it happen? Who do we need to pull in to help us out? And so it's really an all hands on on deck approach with that. Um, and then the other thing which was very unusual this year is we had, I think, more than, gosh, probably we've seen in in the last quite a number of years, is movement of students in and out at the beginning of the year. So this year, we had eleven students transfer in and ten transfer out, which is a lot for us when you're talking about a school of, you know, a hundred and ninety six kids. And seven and four were after school started. So, um, you know, when you think about, that's like six percent of our student population moving in and out, which which was new for us. But it also was wonderful. We had a lot of homeschool families that came back to us, and they're very happy. They're they're, you know, I get emails from the parents saying, we're so glad we're back with you. And, you know, our kids are having a great experience. So that's a good thing.
Good.
And our CPR card, Anne, do you want to? Do you want to click on that? We can just go through it. I think I made it live link to hope.
Um, we can go to the website.
Yeah, and I can just talk you through kind of what what we've done up to this point this year. So um, you know, with the new reading curriculum, one of the first things we did as a staff is determine, we sat down in August and said, okay, so we need to look at all of these parts. What are the things that one hundred percent we are going to commit to every day, no matter what? We did that with math a few years ago and really saw our math. Our math data had proven it, and it has held steady. Um, and so we wanted to do the same thing with with the reading curriculum to say, okay, what are what are the absolutely no matter what's that we must do? Um, and then we've um, taken a look at, you know, like how things are going um, as far as the implementation of that, taking a look at what things we needed to tweak. We've gone back and looked at those things again. We've um, taken a look at our reading essentials and said, okay, so are these things still essential that we worked on again last year? And so we've done a lot of work throughout the course of the year. There's a family engagement piece. Um, one of the things that's really great is that our PTA president and our family engagement coordinator have really taken this thing by the horns, and then they've scheduled a family event every month from now until the end of spring. So it's it's a a pretty amazing thing. It's okay, Anne, if you don't.
I.
It's a it's a lot of clicks, I know. Um, so that's kind of where we are. You can see they're highlighted, the the things in green are the things we've done, and then the things in yellow are really the ongoing things because they go throughout the entire the entire school year. Talked about just what everything on there. So yes, this brings me then to the Four Corners News Crew. Um, so one of the things we talked about was really within the school, helping kids feel like they're they're important and they're involved and they're part of the school community. And so one of the things.
They're.
They're like, okay. Um, so I've got Laura and Billy with me. They're two of our our news reporters um, for our Four Corners News Crew, and our uh, library assistant, uh, Max Plebe has really kind of taken us on as their executive producer, local. Um, and working with the kids, Mr. Coy came out and worked with our students, talked to them a little bit about, you know, how do you write an interview question? What do you do? How do you prepare those things ahead of time? So that's been, it's been really cool. So, um, if you just want to kind of share with them a little bit about, like, what what do you do? How do the videos get made? How do you decide who to interview? All those things. I'll let you talk.
What we do in the Four Corners News is we go around and we pick people from any class, and we ask them questions like, we you're going to do every year, like, one weekend or like, uh, like, what are you going to do on the holiday? And what we love about being on the news is that we're going to um, like, interview different kids, and we get to learn different things about them.
And you do then the lunch and all of the weather. They do the weather. They do the weather report with green screen, so that's that's quite fun. Um, and what did you guys do last week?
Oh, um, so we had the Four Corners Parade, and we, uh, like, broadcasted it. So we had some people like on it, like, saying like what went by, and we got three facts from each class of what like they're like, like, a class back, and we said that. And it was just really fun.
Yeah, we're still putting together the video, so I'm excited to see it. But we did kind of our own little, you know, Four Corners Thanksgiving Day Parade, and and it's it's a great STEM related project because the kids have to engineer their float. They have to figure out how are they going to get it around, you know, what is, how are they going to move it? You know, they have to build it so it doesn't tip over. They have to work with with a teammate. Um, it's a really cool experience. And yeah, we had our our very own hope, though. I'm excited to see what the what the video turns out like, because they're still still in editing mode.
Is it just you two? Or are there other fifth graders too?
Sarah's up. Yeah, there's Laura.
Okay, cool. Any other younger kids? You guys are teaching and coaching? Just fifth grade? Okay.
Any of you going to be broadcasters when you grow up? No.
There you go.
Learn what you want to do and learn what you don't want to.
Exactly. So they do a great job, and it's really fun. It's something that gets looked forward to watching um, every Monday to see, you know, what the what the newscast of the week is. It's very fun. Thank you, girl.
Thanks, girl.
All right, and that's where we are. So if you guys have questions about anything we talked about or anything that has come up that you're wondering?
Thank you. Maybe do vote. Vote for.
Yeah, he's been coming. Let's go to some of her field. So he's been, he's been a huge, huge asset.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I have a couple of action items. You want to take those, Steve, or me to?
You can.
Okay, so the first action item.
Good next to you.
First action item is our recommendation for the twenty six, twenty seven academic calendar.
Motion to approve. Second.
Um, I just want to point out a couple of things. Each year, you know, it's I I try to somehow incorporate staff voice into the calendar so that staff um, can share their feedback as we move this forward every year. We didn't have a lot of options this year, considering September first was on that Tuesday. So it just kind of Christmas and um, the end of the year sort of fell naturally on that calendar. I did share um, a survey with staff uh, before the holiday, asking how they wanted to start the school year, because we had some flexibility with those workshop days um, before the first day of school. And so this calendar reflects their um, uh, vote on that. So.
What's PT comp day?
So we have a couple of days built into the calendar where we compensate uh, our staff who participate in the parent teacher conference.
Oh, okay.
So they worked before that day. They had worked two evenings, which equate to one school day.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all of in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose.
Aye.
Oops, sorry, Laura. Motion carries. Consideration of overnight field trip request from Leah Herman Dundersen for students in grades nine through twelve to attend Europe in June of twenty twenty seven. Welcome.
Nice.
Yeah, sorry.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All right, motion and second discussion.
Thank you.
You're up.
No, you're up.
Well, there was um, interest in it. This would be the fourth tour, and um, some families just wanted longer payment plans, smaller payment plans. So um, I decided to try and roll it out further in advance. So this would be for twenty seven. Um, I'd roll it out to our eighth through eleventh graders, uh, if you guys approve next week. We've had some really good feedback. I've had students come back and tell me that at these tours, they are going to go study abroad. So we have one graduate who's going to go to Scotland, ELL, and we have another one who's going to study abroad in Costa Rica. Um, she's going for um, sports medicine. So so that inspired her, and um, that's awesome. And I listened to your guys' concern, wanting to stick with the level one travel advisories. So these countries are all level one. Kind of clump real closely together and focused on going to different um, ancient cathedrals and castles and uh, going, working with local families and having dinner with them, uh, learning about different farming techniques and.
Is this in twenty seven?
Twenty seven.
Okay.
June two thousand twenty seven.
Okay.
So if I roll it out to our eighth through eleventh graders, they get like a year to have unit plans, so it's a lot smaller for them. Um, and that was some families' concerns, like, could I start planning on earlier in advance? Some people are like, oh, the kid's in tenth grade. What are you doing when they're in twelfth grade? I'm not there yet. I'm not. But I can try to roll about earlier. Make it more financially available for our families.
Yeah, I've had a few of your chaperones reach out and, uh, you know, encourage us to support it and stuff, but um, the ones that have reached out, I know them very well, and and they speak very highly of the program.
And they're a good chaperone team. Uh, I've had some of their students travel with them as well. I feel really confident traveling with them.
Any other questions or further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
We're all giving up.
Thank you.
Move on to the board committee reports. First up is our budget insurance committee, Catherine.
Hmm, I have one action item, which is our gifts, grants, and bequests. The administration recommends approvals to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in November twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. It's definitely impressive.
Yes.
Month after month.
Nice one.
I'm always impressed by the overnight grad parties, the donations we get for that.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please.
Sorry.
Oops.
Yeah, I just see a minor error just for the publication of Superior Youth Organization. That's all. Sorry.
Boy, it's spelling.
Oh. Thank you. Good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, no discussion items, and then as always, informational items on ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports. You got David, anything? Any highlights, David?
Um, one thing that's on there is, I don't know, but uh, the sped reimbursement came out for last, you know, last week, and the estimate that you had. Um, you heard the state budget was going to be forty two percent, you know, a huge windfall for districts. Um, under school math, though, it's actually thirty five percent. That's something that's in the world, six hundred thousand dollars, and that's only a few to thirty five percent for us. Uh, we budgeted at thirty seven percent because usually those numbers come in lower, but that's still a two hundred thousand dollar difference. So, um, there is a good chance at a bump up to probably get to thirty cents. We might be able to just hit no effect, but um, that's where the the difference between some sufficient and some certain comes into play, and it usually bites us, which it doesn't, it's it's significantly less money. Um, also, I just wondered if I was like, the board, you know, is that a meeting with you? Uh, our health insurance company, our health insurance broker last week. Um, and it is not looking good for us for our renewal for next year. Um, we've had about six, seven million dollars in claims go to Medicaid, and the premiums are five point three million. That means the health insurance companies are, you know, in the red for one point four million dollars. I asked, what are we looking at for rates? They said, if we looked at it right now, it would be twenty percent increase. You really got to hope that uh, the next few months don't have as much, as many claims going in, but I'm not holding my breath. And it it all comes down to just, unfortunately, we have people that are getting sick, and that's that's going to drive up our claims. Um, so it's, we just have to be prepared for that and just hope it comes down. One question I need to have on this year, we've always talked about going self-insured, and that's a way that you can save money when you're healthy. Healthy, so we would have lost, we'd have lost this year. We would have had, um, you know, stop insurance to cover us. So we went to loss the full one point four million. Probably would have lost a significant amount of money. So it's it's a good thing we did go in that direction currently. We just got to figure out where where our baseline is, and we're not alone. When I talk with other business managers, the one thing they are terrified is health insurance costs, because you just can't control it. There's nothing we can do to make health insurance more affordable. Um, and it's that's just, that's where we're at right now. So um, we look at the possibility of creating a committee. I don't think we're going to go with committee because um, as our our broker said, we're not even touchable by only insurer companies. As opposed to Medicaid, they just haven't caught us right now because of our our claims status. So uh, we're going to continue to push and see what we can get for rates, and then my tentative plan is actually bring him in, and I have a meeting with all the employees can participate and join in here with the what's going on with their health insurance. But I just wanted to let you guys know, since I just heard about it, and be prepared, prepared for that.
When does the plan year end?
Uh, June thirtieth, so.
So where's that far over already?
No.
Well, and it goes back years where claims that is from December of last year until August of this year, so they have.
Okay.
So, yeah, and it's just, it only takes a few people to get.
Sure.
David, back to that uh, special education funding. So they approve forty two percent. And then they get together and they say, no, we can't afford that. We've got to go down to thirty five. What do you know what the, what is their process?
So how it goes is it comes in and the the state makes an estimate, you're going to spend a hundred million dollars on special education. And we're going to give you forty two percent of that. So here's forty two million dollars. Well, then all of a sudden, the schools come in and get the real bad and say, actually, we spent a hundred and twenty million dollars. They said, we're only giving you forty two million, and that's the difference between some certain and some sufficient. So if somebody says uncertain, I'm giving you forty two million dollars. That's what you're getting. I don't care what the rates is. If it's some sufficient, if it's at forty two percent, they're going to give you forty two percent of that hundred and twenty million, because they're going to give enough that's going to be sufficient to cover them. So that's where people really get hung hung up, like, oh, it's the difference of one word, sufficient versus certain. And when they come back and say some certain, I know we just lost money. Thank you.
Are they always really conservative with that number?
So your differences between one five percent and three percent, we're really hoping to get a three percent. So that could bump us up to thirty eight percent.
Sure.
And we budgeted thirty seven. A lot of other districts budgeted at thirty eight to thirty nine percent, and most of them are, there are some differences, and budgeting at forty two percent, which that's going to, it's going to be extremely painful for them, because now they're going to have to find a way to to cover them, because they they assume they're getting that revenue, and then now that revenue is is just gone. They just don't give you that much money. They do this in the breaks. On a good note.
Thank you, David. Uh, I forgot your goal. There's Santa Claus.
Uh, Dean and I actually went to a conference last week, uh, two weeks ago for sped. And then our some opportunities we have, I think, low for cheap, high cost, which we found us some other ways to to submit for that, which may give us the opportunity to get some of that. High cost is the thing that the the states have really contributed to, mostly to ninety percent. Um, so we're going to look into that. We got kind of a point of place, but also transfer service. So I think there is some opportunity. It certainly isn't covering a million dollars or anything like that, but it was nice to be there, especially Dean being there. She understands pre-education and all the acronyms, and I knew the numbers. So I see the opportunity that she will capitalize. Well, thanks.
Can you say more about that conference? And I I appreciate your efforts to be optimistic. Want to give you props for that.
Uh, well, on my side, it was just, we brought in one or one district was presenting, which I was surprised they were going to do it, because again, that high cost stuff is some certain. So the more people will get. that high cost stuff is some certain, so the more people who get better at it, are gonna get more of the money, and then they're gonna get less of it. But some of it was just how we broke down the high cost. Our original thought was, if we had a student that's over cost over thirty thousand dollars, we just had to figure out a way that that kid costs thirty thousand dollars, which in most instances was a one-to-one aid, because of aid costs. Uh, but it's also, you can tie it into programs, feel free to jump in, or classes, where you could expand it out, or maybe you don't think that kid's a thirty thousand dollar kid. But when you add in all the peripheral stuff that he's required, we can get up to that thirty thousand dollars where we didn't, that we couldn't.
Sure. More comprehensive look at the costs.
Just to add to that, for our professional organizations, between David and I, um, this is the first year they're putting out a, um, a specialized budgeting academy, basically bringing the two together so that we can learn the ways to maximize the revenue and reduce the expenses. And so we have four sessions throughout this year. So that was just the first one. So we have three more to learn from. So, it's good.
Get too touchy feely for me, but it's.
Excellent. Thank you.
Bye.
Way to grow, David.
Out of stretch.
Hey, on that positive note, that ends my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the operations committee, and Sarah's not here, but there are no action items, no discussion items. Informational item, oh, Mr. Jamie Wilson, Director of Food Service.
Everybody.
Hi, Jamie.
So I'm here for my yearly board report. And I really tried to just change some things up for you this year. I feel like I always come and tell you numbers and the same thing. So, um, let's go. Um, changing our perception, that's kind of our, that is our goal in our department. Um, school food doesn't always have a great name. Um, school food employees or just the food in general, and that's the perception we're trying to change. Whether that's in our schools, in our cafeterias, with our students, with our families, but in the community. We know our kids are worth it, and we want people to know what we're doing. We're really proud that we are taking that charge. We want, um, everybody to know that we think we're better than average, like our kids are better than average. Um, this year, I took, last few years, I've highlighted the middle school and the high school. Um, most of my pictures here today are all at our elementary schools. Who we are, we have thirty-six total staff, nine full-timers, five school year, four year-round personnel, um, forty-four hundred to forty-six hundred meals and snacks every day, just under nine hundred thousand meals and snacks last year. We operate two hundred and thirty-five calendar days from July to, um, June last year, only twenty-six, Monday through Fridays, that we didn't serve somewhere in our community. Um, week after school is out, we start our summer program. And the week before school starts, we are still serving meals up until that last day before, um, all our in-service training. We are out in the community to give them that beyond the school day. Um, middle school and high school, we serve four hundred and fifty after-school meals each day. Um, we do concessions and catering. We support fifty to sixty school or events every year. Um, our team loves being part of that, um, those events after the school day. They love being at our concession events. They love getting to know families and students in a different way. Um, our fiscal reality, strong participation is critical. Our department must be self-supporting to maintain a stable budget and our strong fund balance. Every single meal counts that we serve. Um, breakfast, forty-two percent of our students eat district-wide, forty-nine percent, about fifty percent in our elementary schools, and middle school and high school, about twenty-three percent, um, our kids eat breakfast. We have tried everything to reach that crowd. Those kids don't wanna be there for the thing in the morning. We do our best. Um, lunch, sixty-six, sixty-seven percent district-wide. We're up three percent from last year. We're gonna take that as a big win. Elementary, sixty-six percent of our kids eat lunch, and at our middle school and high school, seventy percent, um, have lunch with us. Eight hundred plus kids at our, um, middle school, we serve six hundred meals a day. Um, our goal is to get more of them, those kids in the cafeteria that don't come in our line, we wanna see them. At that high school, same thing, twelve hundred kids enrolled, we serve, um, eight hundred to nine hundred meals every single day. Um, our percentages remain really strong, even with student enrollment being down. Is our participation growing? We update menus regularly. Um, we're always looking at what works and what doesn't work, uh, doesn't work. We've expanded our scratch cooking. Um, we're doing more of it at our elementary, or at our middle school and high school. Um, but everything we're looking at, when we compare products on what we're gonna bring into our school, we look for less ingredients in them. One of the things we've made a focus of is hundred percent beef patties in our schools. That may not sound like a big deal, but it is a really big deal. It's like, you know, the, what's in our beef patties is beef, um, across the board, and we made that change about eighteen months ago. And to be honest, it's not important to me if our kids know that that's the change we made. We know we made that, and we are out, that's one example of how we're always looking for cleaner labels. Um, better variety and fresher choices, increased student engagement events. Um, we'll talk more about that in a minute, but we are really focusing on how we get students involved in our cafeterias and our lunch line. I think we really have reliable customer service, and that's something we talk about in our department on a regular basis. Our staff wants to be there, and they wanna interact with our kids. Um, clear communication and, um, a heavy social media presence. This is one post we did during the government shutdown. We just thought it was important to remind families that we had free after-school meals at our middle school and high school. We had three hundred and fifteen shares in the community on that, forty-four hundred engagements. We have twelve hundred followers. People know to follow us to get their information. Um, organizations in the community share our posts on a regular basis. We are out and we want to be out um, in social media at, at, at the very least once a week. We wanna be relevant. What drives our numbers? This is what drives our numbers. Our staff wanna be there and wanna interact with our kids. Um, fresh produce, like you see all the time, grilled cheese. We spent a week talking about a grilled cheese sandwich, how we serve the best grilled cheese sandwich when you don't have a flat top and don't use butter, and how we bake it, and how we crisp the crust. And we got to a point where we can do it very well, and it's consistent. That's a big deal. May not be in your world, but it's a big deal in my world. Fresh, local, and real. Farmer's School, this is something that started as an initiative that was, okay, we need to get a couple of pounds of produce in each kitchen to do, to, to, to show kids that there's food from down the street or down the road. And it's something that's really grown in our school. Twenty-eight hundred pounds of Bayfield apples. That's something we've been doing for years. The apples get picked, they go in a box, they go in a truck, and we get them the next day. They're calling me on Monday to know how many they need to pick that afternoon for Tuesday. And we're doing twelve, fifteen cases a week. They're coming to an end of that. They'll be done with those, you know, they've all been picked. Um, they'll, we'll still get them through, you know, maybe the holiday break. Um, eighteen hundred and fifty pounds of blueberries. I was lucky enough to go visit this, um, farm in Dayfield, and they pick, they have a growing season or a picking season of five weeks. After Labor Day, it's over. And whatever they have left, they have, um, workers that pick everything, and I went there and I'm like, what, what can we use? What are you gonna give us? We'll give you whatever you can take. Eighteen hundred pounds of, um, fresh frozen blueberries. They taste fabulous, um, better than anything you get in the grocery store. Um, we bought those about that same amount last year, and we're buying that same amount this year, and they lasted through March or April for us. We're newly putting them in parfaits and things like that in our elementary schools once a week. We just know that we're getting that product all year long. Um, through rural farms, we get lettuce, tomatoes, peppers, squash, melons. You see it all there, a ton of it. Um, we've developed relationships with these growers, and what I've heard from them in the last couple of years, when there's just been so many cuts in just about anything is, are they, we gonna be able to continue these programs? And I assure them, yes, we will. As long as I'm in this position, we are making our budget work to make sure that those things continue to happen. Why? Because they depend on it, and then we can get this real, this great product in our kitchens and in our cafeterias each year. Um, that's what sixteen hundred pounds of blueberries looks like. And we get it, and my team does that. What are we gonna do with this? And we have a plan and we make it happen. Um, like I said, visiting the farms this year was something that I wanted to do, and just getting to know our growers on a different level has been unreal. So in rural, I keep, you know, you don't, they, they tend to give us like the ripest product. Like, we get it on Tuesday, need to be using it by Thursday or Friday. You know, you wanna give us an underripe product. We're okay with that, because we know how to handle it, and we can store it in our fridge, and we'll use it on the day that it's like the peak of ripeness. And Jamie, you might wanna come to our farm and see what we do. And I see how things are there, and they are running around picking at the peak of right, rightness, not because they choose to, because that's when they have to pick, because they have so much more going on. So I learned a lot from that. Okay, you do what you do, I'll do what I do, and we'll just keep this going. Um, it was just really neat to see them. Um, we do a lot of promotions, we call them, and we've really changed how we're talking in our department. Um, one of the strategic plan pillars is student engagement. We shift you from promotions to that intentional student engagement. That's what we wanna do. We wanna engage our students every time they come through our line. Um, this, there's events designed for excitement and connection, just anything for us to be able to talk to our kids, to get them in the door. Students help share future menus or help shape future menus. We had a week in October where we didn't follow our menu. Week to week, we just shared a bunch of new products, and they gave us feedback. And I hear from colleagues of mine, like, you, you have surveys? Do you, how do you get this feedback? Stand in line and listen to kids or get in the cafeteria. They will tell you. It's not hard to get information out of them at all. Um, we did a state fair, Menu Day, Fall Food Fundly. Um, we're just always trying to do anything to get kids involved. Um, one of our bigger events was, um, Orange Chicken Day. We started it last fall, and now it's, um, about every two weeks, every three weeks, we serve it. Um, we made T-shirts made that say Spartans love orange chicken. Um, we don't wear those on Orange Chicken Day. We wear them the day before Orange Chicken Day. Because, and that was an argument with my staff, like, no, we promote the day. We need to get kids to talk to us, and we need them to come in the door. Um, sometimes it's just the little things. Actually, a lot of times, it's just the little things that get them telling you, change it. Parfait and put it in a jack-o'-lantern cup around Halloween, and we got more kids coming through the line. Um, what's our greatest strength and challenge? It's staff. Um, we have, I, I believe, it's fun how we've gone through this exercise about what we're doing in our department, and it really aligns with what is going on with the strategic plan. Talk about exceptional staff. I'll tell you, we have it. I, 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 I know we do. They work hard to do what they do. They are here because they want to be. Um, they helped us drive a, a training book. We, we've met um, during all in-surfaces. We have in-service training as well, not just about knives, or not just about how to cut vegetables, or how to cook a grilled cheese. Um, we talk about how they can be leaders in our district, how they can be leaders in their cafeteria. And that's really driving our training right now, because they want help with that when we bring new staff aboard. They want, they wanna be consistent with that strategic plan and with our vision, that we are exceptional, and we're gonna continue to be exceptional for our kids. So that's something we've been working on. So what it reinforces is who we are and how we show up for our kids. Our current challenge, we are short three full-time managers. Um, one retirement plan, Cindy Frost, last day of work today, thirty-eight years. Um, she's gonna be hard to replace, but we started looking for her position last March, knowing she was gonna leave. Um, we have interviewed and offered positions. Yes, we post what we pay, but it's been really difficult to get somebody to come aboard on what we pay in this position. Uh, this has been a major roadblock for us. Our team is stepping up. We're short those three managers that come to about a hundred and twenty hours per week right now. Um, a long-term stability requires filling these roles. Our strength is that exceptional staff. I say that a lot. Um, we have, have a customer service mindset. That's for real. You know, I say repeat here because I say the same things over and over, and my staff know I say the same things. We are focused on that student who comes to our line or doesn't come through our line. We're just focused. Staff genuinely love serving kids. Our staff wants to be there, many with five to ten years in the district. I say this a lot also, we have a strong admin support. We couldn't do what we do without that support. That's on all levels, at all schools. Um, it's just really pretty amazing that they know, they trust us enough to keep doing our job, and it, it, it's really easy to know that they support us. It just makes it easier. Um, community trust, I think it's another thing that we've built over the years. Families know why we're here and that we care about their students. That's why they send them through our line. Um, I talked about that growing social media presence, um, just to keep stu, um, families informed, and again, that customer service culture is what we have. Where do we go from here? Those continued student engagements. Um, we need to keep doing those. We're finding that our team loves it, our students love it. Um, we wanna keep strengthening that staff training for them to be leaders in their kitchens, but also be leaders in their schools. Um, that's something they want, and they've come to me and asked for that training specifically. And it's really just, when they ask you for something, okay, how do I get it for you? You know, just providing them the resources and what they need to do their job to the best of their ability. And we need to fill those managers' position. Um, we keep upgrading equipment, something that increases efficiency or uses less water or gas. Um, and we wanna keep expanding our local partners, look at scratch, cooking and still have more cleaner labels. That's it. Questions for me?
What's your favorite feedback from students so far?
Honestly?
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah.
Your fries suck. I, I take that very personally. Like, okay, I heard that one. I have three kids in my backseat, and that's what they, my, my son and his two friends, and I'm like, yeah, they do, Jamie. They're, you're not good. It's like, okay, so we take this back, and that's the stuff, like, that's a joke. I don't have a deep fryer.
Yeah.
I have large ovens that we cook sixty pounds at a time.
Yeah.
How do we do it better? And then when they come in line and say, anything with fries, please, anything with fries, how do we get something to sell? We put fries on it, so. Um, that's a good one. I hear that one, it looks safe. I think we're all personal. Any other questions?
They do love the Alfredo, though.
Oh, the Alfredo's a hot, Cajun chicken Alfredo at the high school that they keep asking for. I think when kids ask for things, that's what, that's it.
Yeah.
When is this coming? When are you gonna do that? I don't know. It's pretty, I don't, I don't wanna lie, I have probably the best job. I mean, seven restaurants, and kids just keep coming. It's a great place to be.
Who does your, who does the social media stuff? You do.
Okay. Trying to get some help.
Okay.
Yeah. And we just keep pushing it. Um.
Katie, yeah.
Yeah, she does the canvas stuff, all the other pictures and stuff, yeah. Um, it's something I like to do. It might be a little control issue, too.
Product control.
Anything else?
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Laura's got a question for you.
Oh, Laura.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, thank you. Um, you always have so many positive things to say, especially about, you know, the staff you work with, and I just feel like we don't get enough interaction, uh, with your amazing staff um, that are doing the work, but, uh, definitely, I know we're always welcome to come have a meal, so that, that's good news. Um, one thing, you know, I'm just thinking about, I remember thinking about Bayfield specifically with the local food grants. Is that something you'd imagine would ever come back, or is that bye-bye forever kind of a thing?
I don't know if it will. If it will, it does, we will take advantage of it, but like I said, we've worked that stuff into the budgets regardless. It's here to stay in our world.
Thank you so much for that priority. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura.
Jamie brought up a question. I just want to let you know when, um, Molly does her presentation, that it's fully noted. He brought me all the information on those managers. We talked about that, so.
All right, thank you. That concludes the operations committee report. Personnel negotiations committee, Mr. Nick Olson.
I have a few action items. The first one, administration recommends approval of the December twenty twenty-five new hires and separations report. Should approve. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do see a couple of your, Jamie, your resignations coming up, but um, Cindy, you know, having been able to work with her the number of years at the high school, and how she managed that whole place and and, and, and the product and the, the food that she produced in it on daily basis, and she'd come up with all these little snacks for everyone to. On the side.
Oh, sorry. Have a couple more weeks.
We're, there, we're a few. Anyway, um, yeah, you're gonna miss her, no doubt about it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Second action item, administration recommends releasing Joseph Florastano, math teacher from S M S, from his twenty-five, twenty-six school year contract for his request effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the liquidated damages provision enforced. Should approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And this last action item, Jamie gave us a little preview to administration recommend. Administration recommends approval of the updated salary schedule for the school nutrition manager position. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Molly, do you want to give a little background?
So like Jamie said, we've been posting those positions since last spring. Had, had interviews, put on offers. Of course, they don't take it for their pay. So about a month ago, we kind of looked into four food service positions. We don't, we can't just look at education world, right? Because these positions are everywhere. So we looked at the restaurant industry in the area, some other schools and like a lot of these positions are housed in healthcare places, either the hospital or assisted living type places. And what we compared to what was open at the time, we were three to five dollars per hour less than all of those positions. So in fact, the last person we offered to would have been coming from an assisted living place and she was going to have to take a five dollar pay up per hour to come here. Which yes, these positions are, you know, days without nights and weekends, but five dollars per hour is a lot to ask somebody to take for a pay up. So we had five school nutrition managers at the start of this year, three are leaving, as you guys saw on the board agenda. And for reasons that are normal turnover reasons, you know, retirement, promotion to a director level position and relocation. And so Jamie and I decided we decided to bring this job forward for review. Jamie's been here for ten years. I've been here for eight and in that time, we've never reviewed this position before. We did have seven food service positions when I started here and we combined those down into four. And when we combine those together, we always put them at the higher level. And we've also reviewed the kitchen assistant, assistant cook and head coach position already since we've been here, just not this school nutrition manager position. So because of that and the timing of needing to hire people and we cannot hire anybody, we are bringing this forward to increase the salary.
The other thing I want to add, and Jamie, you can speak to this, but just a reminder that any positions in food service are separate and funded outside of Fund Ten and it's a self-sustaining program, so those don't affect our Fund Ten budget.
Makes sense to me.
You answered my questions too. I think with Molly and I looked at this, no exaggeration, fifty, sixty, seventy light positions in the area and we were very close to bottom.
Do you think this is enough?
I, I think I'm.
Because I see a three dollar, okay.
It's in where we need it to fit in. We do have a lot to offer. And we're not getting, we're getting candidates up until they accept.
Okay.
And I think adding to, like, when we review these salary schedules and increase them, we obviously will look at the two managers that are left in the role and put them where they need to be on the new scale.
Sure, sure. Makes sense.
Is there, Jamie, is there potential for callback for any of these people that we offered to before?
I'm holding on to one right now.
Okay, that's good. That's good. I guess we'll find out pretty quick.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And no discussion items, no informational items, and that concludes my report. Mister.
All right, thank you. Teaching and learning committee. All right, we've got a couple of action items. Crystal Hintsman, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will take the administration recommends the annual approval of the district academic and career plan.
Should approve.
Second.
Great. Motion to second, Crystal.
I have a few items tonight. I'm going to try and be as concise as possible and then you just let me know if you have any questions. Caitlin Noel, who is our senior project coordinator at the high school, is also our academic and career planning coordinator. And she gave a, a pretty big presentation last year about all of the details of what we do in kindergarten through twelfth grade with that plan. So I'm not going to give a big presentation about it. We are required by state statute to have the board approve on an annual basis our academic and career plan, plan. It is posted on our website, so the link that we have as our plan is just exactly to our website. That's one of the requirements. I will tell you that the law requires that we have a plan for our sixth through twelfth graders on what we do for academic and career planning. We choose to go above and beyond that and we have a kindergarten through fifth grade plan as well. We were highlighted thanks to Caitlin's hard work at the high school as one of the six.
DPI model.
Yeah, DPI model districts and Caitlin and then Heidi Sigfridt was with her as well. Did a presentation at the Wisconsin School Counseling Conference this fall and told about our plan. So our plan has been that it's a model and GPI has celebrated it and complimented the work that we do.
But we do need to bring it forward every year.
Yeah.
For your approval officially.
So do you have any questions about our plan?
What does the K through five stuff look like?
So we have standards in social studies and other areas at the elementary level that tie very closely to kids thinking about the people that work in our community and what kind of jobs there are, what kind of goals you set and what you might want to be as a contributing citizen in our community someday. Like, those are things we talk about in our standards with elementary students anyway. So those are just naturally built-in things and in our plan, you'll see that some of those are named specifically, like what we do with each grade level. In addition, the tool that we are required to use for the sixth through twelfth grade level is called Zello. It's an online tool. If you have had kids in our district, you're probably familiar with it, where they set goals and do their planning. We choose to pay for that tool to start with our elementary students. It's really only about, excuse me, twenty-five hundred dollars for the school year for all of our K through five students. So they start using that tool and doing planning and lessons within that with their school counselor and their teacher in elementary school. So, yeah.
That's nice. Just gets some thinking.
Yeah, and it's everything kind of wraps into that, everything from the fire department visiting to talk about what their jobs are like in our community to career days teachers have or read-alaws they do all the time about different, what citizens in our community do. How you set goals and think about what you want to do when you grow up.
And our reporters at Four Corners, sort of knowing that they're not going to be.
We're doing our job. We're helping eliminate.
Good.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Administration recommends the approval of the school. Let's try that again. Administration recommends the approval of the district Spartan library plan.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
Motion and a second.
All right. So this is something else, not on an annual basis, but every couple of years that the school board needs to approve. We are, of course, required by DPI to have a library plan. Tonight, Jody Wright is here and Melanie Barsness, two of our teacher librarians. Jody is our teacher librarian at the high school and takes the lead on teacher librarian work in our district. And Melanie is our teacher librarian at Northern Lights and just on that, I wanted to say Cooper, sorry. And so they're here to answer any questions that you have and we're not going to do a presentation about the plan. You can review it. Yeah, if you would like to, it's on a Google site as well. Is there anything you want to add, Jody?
No, it's, I mean, it's a, it's been a requirement for, for, I've been doing this forever and it's been a requirement forever. It used to be a, like, like a book. It was huge. It was the technology and library plan. It required insane amounts of work and documentation and then you'd submit it to DPI and they'd send it back and it like makes me cringe. And now it's an opportunity for us to share what we're doing. The requirement is that we have it, that it is core approved and that we submit it to the state. And so this is just documentation of what we do.
Any big changes from previous one?
No.
What are some of the highlights? The budget I saw was in there.
Budget is in there. The budget is amazing. We're the only place in school finance in Wisconsin that our budget continues to increase. The Common School Fund funds all of the resources for school libraries and that is a constitutionally guaranteed pot of money that is interest off investments that were made in land sales forever ago. It's an amazing investment.
It's very restricted funding too.
But it is super restrictive.
Yeah.
It is like, there are very specific things we can purchase, can't purchase. And that's my big job is to just watch that budget like a hawk. And Dave tries to steal things from me all the time. I have to say no. Sometimes Crystal and I will.
We collaborate.
Yes. Zello is a perfect example because it meets the criteria as a research tool. We can purchase it out of Common School Fund. It can be used as a research tool and an instructional tool at the same time. So we can pay for it out of the Common School Fund. So as budgets dropped, Crystal and I worked together to try and figure out what else can we work together on? Because as I said, our budget has, we have like a twenty-five percent increase in our budget last year when everything else was dropping. And they're saying it looks like it will continue to increase for the next, for the foreseeable future. The, the guy in charge is retiring this year though and he is, like, he's been really strong in leading the push to maintain those funds. There are some legal battles going on right now. Milwaukee County has all, has managed to sneak some money out of that fund for some not school-related things and so it's being fought in courts right now. We'll see what happens, but it's still in the big picture right now. It's a pretty minimal amount and the, the Ramsey family looks safe.
Way to rub that into everybody else.
Until Dave wants to take something.
Yeah, make it falls out, okay.
And I think we have done a good job to a few of the really big purchases that the district could not sustain that I think are integral to some of the stuff that kids and teachers have become accustomed to using. We were able to get creative and make sure that we're using it in our library instruction. So that because they're not research tools, but if we use them as our instructional tools, it does qualify for Common School Fund. So that was, we're able to keep like, there's, yeah, like twelve, thirty thousand dollars worth of other stuff that would have had to probably go away and Google Read Right, which is really great for allowing kids to be able to do text to speech, speech to text, looking up words and even the exciting part I think is you can save all of your sources. So it looks very similar to tools that they will be using at IRN and things like that. So really being able to create those skills in elementary that will take them out through all and then beyond.
Cool, nice. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. No discussion items, informational items. Crystal's back. Update on.
This time.
Act twenty and literacy resource.
Real friend for this one. I'm just trying to, yeah.
Yeah, you're fine. I'm trying to move this so you can see them.
Okay, so you've been hearing a bit about our journey since Act twenty, the Wisconsin literacy law was put into place about all of the required components and where we've been. A visual that I've shown you and Kate's shown you also a couple of times is that there are really three buckets to the Wisconsin literacy law, Act twenty, that came into place. We, of course, had to make sure that our staff went through required training. We need to be sure that we have a core literacy resource for teachers to use to teach the kids that's aligned with science-based literacy. And then there are all the assessments that have come with it. So the first piece that we tackled right away and you were part of some of those discussions was training our teachers. There are a couple of goals of the training, of course, learning about science-based literacy instruction, helping improve instruction in all of the areas that are involved in that. And then really giving our teachers the background about that so they could help be part of deciding what that literacy resource would look like and which one we would use. So science-based literacy, of course, has to include all of these components that are not new to our teachers, just because the law went into effect. You know, this information wasn't new to our teachers. Our teachers had already been doing an excellent job teaching literacy. We just knew that we needed to hone in and improve some of the pieces. This is just another visual you've probably seen before when I've talked about science-based literacy. Scarborough's reading rope that talks about all the components that have to come together magically in that classroom with the teacher and then for our students' brains for them to be able to become literate. So we have to date trained thirteen of our administrators. And the administrator training is a different training than our teachers need. So all of our principals and instructional directors participated in the training with all of our teachers and then went above and beyond and did a four-month training separately as well. We have trained a hundred and fifty-six teachers from our first initial training and then our group last year that joined the district. And then this year, I think we're, I think we're training approximately sixteen teachers. We are required by the law in the first six months of someone being employed with us, if there's someone who's required to be trained, to get that training underway. We are very lucky. Amy and Sarah, our instructional coaches, went through the process of becoming trainers themselves. So they went through that work and so we can, we of course have to pay a training fee to the site, but they can be our trainers, which saves us a lot of money. And just so you're aware on the training and it costs a little over a thousand dollars to train a teacher. We are hopeful over time as teachers come out of undergraduate with the training and the learning, which was part of the law, that colleges would start including this in their methods classes, that teachers will come to us as new hires already having the training. And if we hire teachers from other districts, especially in Wisconsin and have had the training, then they don't have to get trained again. So that's just a little bit to catch you up to speed on that first bucket of all the training that we've done and some ongoing stuff as well. So that's, oh, go ahead.
Maybe you mentioned this before. Is there any kind of recertification that needs to be done for this or is it a one and done?
Good question.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's just a one-time requirement, like from the state level. I will say that as elementary teachers, because literacy is your, it's your meat and potatoes of what you do, that all of our PD, you know, will always like going training, especially in the parts that maybe oral language or phonics or writing where our teachers depending on the grade level want more of that training. But from the state level, it was just once.
And Crystal, as a reminder, all that training was an unfunded mandate, correct?
It was an unfunded mandate, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And that is one of the reasons we tried to be strategic and have some of the training take place on those last days of school when, was it a year and a half ago when we got out of school, our elementary students ended their year a little early? So we could do some of the training during the already contracted teacher time to save some money. So that brings me to the real thing that we wanted to share tonight and that is how things are going now that we're in that bucket of working with our new literacy resource, which we're implementing this fall. So again, we are required to have a core literacy resource that has all of the components of science-based literacy instruction. Just these couple of slides just show some visuals of what Benchmark Advance, which is the resource we went with, look like. We used benchmark literacy prior to Benchmark Advance. So the big components listed on the screen were familiar to our teachers in general, with the exception of the writing component, which is a new piece for our teachers in the new, in the new resource. The units are knowledge-based, which helps build in the science and the social studies content. You can see some examples of some of the scope and sequence of the topics the students are learning about across the grade levels. It has a very strong phonics and word study component. And the writing is integrated, which is different than in the past. We had had a separate writing resource than our reading. So I asked some teachers to come tonight. I'll let them introduce themselves here in a second to share with you how things are going. There's always some good, some bad, some ugly and tough times and great times when you're trying something new. So I wanted them to tell a little bit about that.
My name is Megan Marthaller. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Bryan's and I've been in the district for almost twenty years.
I'm Lisa Baker. I teach third grade at Cooper and this is my first year.
Some other things that are going well, Benchmark Advance connects well with our other content areas like Crystal was saying. Some other things that are going well, Benchmark Advance connects well with our other content areas like Crystal was saying, especially social studies and science, which is nice. It also shows more rigor than our previous reading programs. I know for me with my kindergartners, some vocabulary, it's been really great to see how they are using those words beyond just our bold construction. So I definitely see that in that area as well.
My turn?
Yeah.
I, I just have to say first of all, as a teacher, when I, when I began the layout and delivery of this, I think it feels really good to have something so engaging and new. Because even as a teacher, I appreciate that. It's like we ask, we ask the kids to do some really hard things. And I think we need to ask that of ourselves. So this learning curve that this has required of us, I think is fair and it's been fun to be like reignited with some passion with these new topics that we're delivering with the kids. But I, I wrote that the materials are rich in content and highly engaging. Something I want you to know is as a third grade teacher, we have something that we call it our magazine, right? So we got, we take out a new magazine for a period of three weeks that goes along with our reading delivery and content. We just wrapped up our government unit and there are so many skills woven into that. So when Crystal talks about that reading rope, that's exactly what's happening as we deliver this and it's exciting. It really goes back and forth between a lot of different skills that the kids have to practice. So that leads me to the next one where students are continually engaged in a multitude of reading skill practice throughout the lessons. There are many, many resources that we can turn to as a teacher. So when I know that someone in my small group reading is struggling with a specific skill, it's really kind of endless of what I can find and dig into. And I believe we've just started touching, touching that because we did, it's there. We're just going to keep digging. And our coaches are continually available. I think we're very lucky that we can call on them whenever we need to. I mean, even my emergency midday emails, they always seem to answer me, which is really great. We guys, urgent again, but to fill this, but thank you for always being there.
Some of the challenges is with anything new, there's going to be challenges that we're working through. The amount of planning time needed prior to starting each unit can leave teachers feeling very overwhelmed. Just a lot of work to put in on the front end for our three-week units. The website has a plethora of extras that while it is wonderful to have, it can also be a rabbit hole of, I know this is what I want to find, yet I'm, you know, flipping all over trying to get there. So those pieces are just, you know, things that we are working through right now as we're getting to a better.
As you try to find something you previously used before, there's probably three ways to get there. So you really have to remember how you found it. Yeah, there's just, there's a lot of online materials that, that's a, that is a great thing. We just have to navigate it a little bit better. And I think give ourselves some grace that we're, we're, you know, having a learning curve right now. I found this myself the last bullet, but teachers are working to find appropriate pacing. So I have to have, you know, a bit of a sense of humor with myself because I'm like, well, no. Why am I not getting through this? It's a ten minutes and I'm on minute twenty-five. Again, I think some, I think as a teacher, I'm, I'm often wanting my learners to have some mastery in a lesson because that feels good and I want to get there. But I'm finding out with this resource that I have to trust the process and trust the timing and keep delivering the way I'm supposed to.
Do you find that as you've gotten into the second or third units, that the planning is getting a little bit better? Or is it still as challenging as it was back in September?
I feel like it's getting better.
Getting a little bit better.
It's allowing me more time to start looking at other pieces that are in there.
Okay. I was just wondering how quickly you'll feel it better. Like that, that, yeah.
I just started unit four today and it, it does feel a lot better. And I must say, I really like that the writing is integrated and that we're it's not separate.
It seems natural that they would be together.
It seems natural.
Yeah.
And I can laugh at this, the first, the first like writing unit that I taught and I was, we were done very, very quickly. So I was like, we got this, but now I see, well, actually we have three weeks to do that. Yeah, pacing, learning.
It's, it is like anything new. It takes, takes time. But we did hear at two of our visits to the schools and stuff, the same thing, that it's so overwhelming because it is so new and, and the time needed. And there was expression by, by both faculty at the two schools we visited so far, so far about more PLC time. But then there was a concern about across the district about what's really going on at each grade level too. And, and making sure that there's time spent in professional development days to, to address some of the concerns or just see what, what people are doing. So.
Yeah. Well, one of the reasons we wanted to talk about it tonight is just to provide a little more context, knowing that this has been a topic that does come up in our listening sessions. I thought we should probably give the full scope of kind of where we've been, where we're going and be really thoughtful about what support you guys need and that's transition.
Is there a platform or like a, somewhere that we can give for, that you guys can give feedback to Benchmark about complexities of it? Or we have a direct rep that we can work with?
Absolutely. You're talking about the big resources at the elementary level math and literacy. Like, you know, we, we have the cell phone number of our big rep. Yes, absolutely. Vanessa, and she's been very responsive. She's been our rep for several years, even prior to this resource. Something else that's fairly helpful, even though we don't collaborate a lot with them is Maple has transitioned. The school district of Maple has transitioned and uses the same resources and Vanessa's also their rep. So it's, you know, if we're having a frustration about something and giving feedback, and so is the district in Ohio, it's also nice when someone close by is giving the same feedback. So that we can always collaborate with them or talk to Brad, their principal, about how things are going also.
Do you feel like there's changes being made from feedback that you're seeing from the other?
There is always ongoing development in a resource. But when you're talking about this big of a resource and how many additions they will print out, I mean, they're not, they're not doing that every year. You know, so, but being that there's so much in an online platform now, which is really different, of course, than it was, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, it's much easier for them to adjust things on even little things on how to make something a little more printer friendly or something like that.
Okay, cool.
Have you trainers, since you're answering questions, have you seen common threads or themes in the types of questions you guys are getting? And maybe that can influence what kind of PD days we have and you can address that.
I think, well, that's the slide.
Good transition to them.
Yeah. I'm Sarah.
Amy Patel.
And we, the first two official trainings in April of last year and then August before school started were facilitated by trainers that came through, well, they were Benchmark Advance official trainers. And we didn't always have the same consistent trainers for every grade level. And then from, from that point on, I think Amy and I have tried to be very responsive in terms of working with our shared leadership team. And both Megan and Lisa are on shared leadership team. We have reps from every grade level and every building and really just trying to give them a lot of time to network and ask questions in the moment. So they're supporting each other across buildings when we come together for our monthly meetings. And then getting information from them to sort of plan our staff development days. Like what do you think is the most pertinent thing that we address in October? We, we looked a little bit more at assessments, something that we hadn't got to in our previous trainings. And we'll continue to do that. So our next shared leadership team meeting is in January. Prior to that meeting, we'll probably send these leaders a survey saying, what do you think this group needs for us to problem solve ahead of our February staff development? I mean, we try and be as responsive as we can, giving them time to network and problem solve together because they're the ones, you know, I hate this expression, but in the trenches, if I could think of a nicer word. You're in the, you're in the kindergarten trenches. And then I think the other thing we've offered a few and will continue to offer them, although it's hard because people don't always show up, is trying to offer some virtual before-school networking optional sessions to people. I mean, that's the challenge when you've got five buildings and everyone's got slightly different schedules. But I mean, from our perspective, one hundred percent of what we focused on this year has been supporting Benchmark from a professional development lens.
I think one of the shifts that's also difficult and may continue to be difficult this year, but I think in future years will get easier. As Crystal showed on the slide, this is knowledge-based. And so the themes are expecting that the kids are coming with some prior knowledge. So for example, Lisa shared, she just wrapped up unit three. We do have district level timelines. So our, not that it's huge, but our third through fifth grade teachers are in one timeline. K two, just because of how the resources are on a different timeline. But unit three, everyone does government. And so next year, for example, Lisa's third graders will have had the second grade unit on government coming to her. And that resource is written, knowing what they had the year previously, so they can build on that knowledge. And this year, our kids are coming with more gaping holes because they haven't had that. And so we too are reminding teachers that our focus is reading and the government learning is a great byproduct, but don't get caught on those rabbit holes of teaching the whole everything. Because, you know, our focus is reading and writing the ELA standards. And I think sometimes that's a good reminder and I think that that's a big shift that will continue to get easier as we continue to use this resource, but it's going to take a whole year
Sure.
for that exposure.
And that's why your lesson took point five minutes for. You're teaching government and reading.
One of my favorites, this teacher, she was doing a writing lesson and she set a timer for ten minutes. The students didn't hear the timer went off mid-sentence. She stopped herself. She moved on. And not one kid in the class said, you didn't finish your sentence. Sorry, move on.
Alisa put in a few pictures here of some students so you can see that, that magazine that they were, that she was talking about, that our students use.
She's coming home. So if you have elementary kids, please.
The boy on the right is doing a skill that we teach called annotating. And so yes, the content is government, but what I love about it, like he has to circle vocabulary words that he still wants to learn. He writes down questions in the margin about his text. So the skill of diving deeper, you know, into what you're learning is being taught through the magazine, but it's carrying on. You know, that was something that I had to teach them exclusively in unit one, but now in unit four, I'm like, well, today you're going to annotate during this time and they can sit down and do it. So it's pretty, they're very proud of their magazines in the middle because they'll work really hard, practicing a lot of skills. And then the boy on the left is, that's during our small group reading time where we can engage in some of the texts that go along with the unit.
Yeah. Cool stuff really good.
Do you have any other questions? Great job.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Stepping away.
It's Crystal. All right. Up next, Kate Cash, Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment, Spears High School Principal and Runner. Liker. Skeeze, okay.
Yay, it's no. So, hi, Ruthie. I am here in my Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment role to share with you our data from last year. This always feels weird because we're like a year behind. The state, we'll, we'll call it the state statute and the data and how we can release publicly, the information is always a little lagged. So this is, there's a lot. I always try to simplify this, but I don't want to be too simple because it is important and it is an accountability measure. So I have a little bit of data and then I have the report card scores and some, and we can engage in some question and answer if you still are not overwhelmed with all the fantastic information tonight. So I did share this with you in your email, so you can click and open some of these things larger in a version. You have the PDF and so that way you have access. And if you have questions, as always, please, if you don't have them tonight and you want to email me, feel free to do that. So I just started, obviously, we're all aware of the work we did around our mission and our vision. There are pillars, I think are a really important part as we talk through the student engagement, growth and achievement. Really, this presentation is around our data and our work, looking at our achievement specifically and our data around student assessment data from the state level. So I always like to give a really brief overview, this is very quick, around what is required because these required assessments make up the report card score in some capacity. So I'll tie that back in when we look at the report cards specifically. So the Wisconsin Forward Exam is the first state required assessment outside of the early literacy piece around Act Twenty. But the first state assessment our students take, starting in third grade, language arts and math, and that goes third through eighth grade. Our fourth and eighth graders also take science and our fourth, eighth and tenth graders take social studies additionally. So from there, we have the dynamic learning maps, which is our alternate assessment for our students with significant cognitive abilities. Less than one percent typically of our population is taking the dynamic learning maps assessment. So that is the state assessment that is the alternative assessment. The ACT and the pre-ACT are the high school components of, so we go from the Forward Exam to the pre-ACT in ninth and tenth grades, which transitions to the ACT in eleventh grade. I always think it's really important to note that our students in the state of Wisconsin in ninth, tenth and eleventh grades all take the pre-ACT and the ACT as our state assessment. It is not optional. It is not do it if you want to do it because you're potentially college-bound. It is the measure in the state of Wisconsin, which is not the same thing as it is in Minnesota or other states where it is pockets of students taking the ACT. So I think kids take it more seriously because of that. Yep. And I think it's a really great opportunity we provide to all of our students. It is a free ACT assessment, but ACT now costs ninety-three dollars if you're going to take it on a Saturday on your own. I also acknowledge that not all of our kids necessarily need it for college entrance. That's not a path that they've chosen. It is still a, an accountability measure for our work grades, EK through twelve. And it's a measurement tool. So engaging kids in doing their best and getting information around even career path pieces from both the pre-ACT and ACT, they've done a better job of, of having their reports present that information additionally. And then I have included Ames Web Plus on this doc because it is a required state assessment. It is not yet, dot, dot, dot wrapped into our report cards. From there, the district and classroom level assessments, I think it's important. So we have this required piece, big one-day snapshot of a student's achievement level. But we know that we, throughout every single day, our teachers are doing an amazing job of monitoring student progress, whether it's formally or informally. As a district, we have some district level assessments we use. You've heard me talk about FastBridge, which is our primary district level assessment to monitor progress throughout and also kind of show some trends. I think another important piece, so what you will see is math and English language arts for each of those three grade levels. And I'll, I'll carry on in a second. I just want you to kind of see a little bit of what is presented here. I've left the trend starting in twenty eighteen, nineteen. It's really important that you have it in your brain. The test is not always the same. So we had a huge change in percentiles, cut scores a couple of years ago. We've had the COVID pandemic. So you can see nineteen, twenty. We have no assessment data. So that, I always struggle to say like, here's a trend line because I don't, we are not comparing the exact things. But we are comparing Forward Exam scores based on the state and, and what we have. So in the blue bar graph, those are, that is the percent of students in superior in the grade level we're looking at. So in this case, fourth grade, who are meeting or advanced or proficient or advanced, whichever terminology they're used somewhat interchangeably. So that is the percent of students in fourth grade math on the Forward Exam last year who were proficient. So in fourth grade, fifty percent of our students were proficient. The year prior, forty-eight percent. So we made a jump there of two percent from the prior year. And then in the red bar graph would be the entire state of Wisconsin's proficiency. And then in the red bar graph would be the entire state of Wisconsin's proficiency uh on that same measure. So uh we are closing the gap to the state in fourth grade math. And so I think that is a celebration, we have room to grow as we know, and we're working. I think this data shows you the same trends that we've seen from the work we identified around math. And we're working really hard on that. So then you see ELA, English Language Arts, fourth grade, forward exam on the lower right. And the uh performance above the state average, which is a huge celebration. And we continue that work. I am going to flip to the next slide again, the slide, you have a slideshow, digest that um as you kind of go through. Have a nice roll. I mean. Now let's. Thank you. All right, so here math, eighth grade, which we know has been uh, we've struggled in that area. We did make some growth um over the last year. We've made some significant growth since 22, 23, and we continue to focus there as well. And then our English Language Arts uh data is in the lower right hand corner there, again, as compared to the state. And final achievement slideshow is our 11th, our, our 11th graders uh, which again, this is the ACT. So the first two are the forward exam, now we're on the ACT. Uh, we had some nice growth in mathematics, 4%. Uh, more of our students are meeting or advanced, which is a celebration, especially with our math data. And we closed that gap uh a little bit to the state. And we have a celebration in ELA uh for our 11th graders outperforming the state uh even in a bigger margin than last year. So we have some celebrations, we have some work to do, which is uh making those connections to our strategic plan continues to be, this continues to highlight the work that we're doing. Before I touch base on report cards, specific questions to the achievement data or tests in general in the test layout?
In the eighth grade?
Yep.
Back one slide. Why, why do you think, and this may be a dumb question, but why is such a, because we stayed pretty consistent, we're climbing, but such a big jump from the rest of the state?
Um, I, I have some theories. I think there are a number of things that play. Number one, um it is always a challenge to engage our kids in eighth grade specifically around taking a test that they see no relevancy to. So I do think that's, I mean, that's a challenge at all grade levels. But eighth grade tends to be a tough year. They're also taking two additional assessments in eighth grade, science and social studies on top of the math and the ELA. So it, it can be like a what's the point, especially for kids that we're trying to engage in, in showing us their best work. So we're doing work around that. I would also uh argue that we're testing concepts before the end of the year. So we're always trying to be really mindful, which obviously the rest of the state is too. Our testing window is in March to April, but we're testing on the end of the year content. So we have to be mindful about where we get to in our spoken sequence, which I think we're, we do a really nice job of. Um, I did not, the last two years I have not put up the not tested percentage. Um, I moved away from that after COVID. So right around COVID times, we, we noticed a pretty big discrepancy uh between districts and the percent of students that they're testing. So in order to receive federal funds and not have a, a improvement plan in place, you need to be testing 95% or more of your students. Um, it is not, it is reported on the report cards, but it doesn't detract from your points. It used to a number of years ago. I will say that as you skim specific districts, which is all public information and linked into our press reports. So you can go on the website, you can look up any school district, all of their report card information. You will see trends around districts testing 90%, 88%. Um, we're testing 98% of our students. And I would argue that that can skew data very quickly. And the state is aware, they do publish a number of pieces about the importance of test participation. Um, but I think that is a big factor in some of our data points.
And you said, what, what's the drawback of, do you have 95% or more to get?
Yeah.
Specific funding?
Yeah, so uh it's tied to our federal funding.
Okay.
Um, and in the past, and I don't know about in the future, it did uh, I can't recall the years before 2019. They did deduct five points off of your report card score if you did not test by 95% or more. But then they removed that from the report card scoring. Um, so I don't know that it's intentional, but I know that we try very, very hard to test every single kid in our district because it's important that this represents all of our students. And I am not saying other districts don't, however, their percentages are much lower than ours.
Sure.
So those are, those are three kind of pieces um making the connections. We are seeing a higher proficiency on our Fastbridge data than this. So that indicates that our kids, we need them to see the importance of this assessment. We want to get more accurate.
Yeah, I think growth is the key, right? And we're doing that, so that's, thank you.
Any other achievement related questions before I talk a little bit about the course? Yep, you think something, feel free to come back. All right, you uh board members, I did put this kind of just report card at a glance sheet in front of you, which is, this is a live link uh on that document, see what it will take you right to this. I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I wanted you to have it in front of you because this is my analogy. It's like giving your taxes, like the cheat sheet for doing your taxes and how all of these little pieces and their formulas come together. So the report cards are made up of four categories. Those four categories are achievement, growth, target groups, and then on track to graduation. So when you go uh out on the DPI's website and you look at our report card or any other report card for any schools across the state. And just as an, as a mention to that, um private and choice schools can opt have a report card, but that is not requirement of them in those categories. So again, that's another differentiation between public school requirements and others. So these four categories make up the report card total score. Achievement is English Language Arts and Math, so that would be a straight achievement. What percent of your kids are meeting or advanced? The growth category takes a look at students who took the test one year prior and did they grow? So for example, it doesn't incorporate all the kids. It would only incorporate fourth grade because third graders haven't taken it before. And only students that are, were previously enrolled in Wisconsin and took the forward exam or the ACT as a Wisconsin student and did they grow? So that's a much smaller group, but it's looking at growth. Uh, your achievement and growth percentage that it makes up on your report card is not the same by school. So your free and reduced percentage has a impact on what percent your score, how your score is weighted. So if you have a higher percent of your student population that receives free and reduced lunch status, your growth has a higher weighted value than your cheap, straight achievement. So they've tried to give some mathematical formulas to even out the report card process. Uh, so it is very difficult to say this school and that school, and here's their scores, and it is the exact same thing. And I say that out of fact, uh it works well for some school, like it's a bonus to some. Whereas if others had a higher percentage of their growth factored in, their score would be way higher. So I think that's something to just be aware of when you're looking at the information. The target groups, and Kim mentioned this in her report, the target group looks at, it's like a second report card score on your bottom quartile of your students. So what they do is they take the bottom 25 percentile, 25th percentile of the students. So you have a whole list and they take the bottom. So if you have 100 kids, it's the, the lowest 25 students. And then they run a report card on those lowest 25 students. And then that score gets added back in with the goal of if we're doing better for our lowest quartile, all of our kids will achieve at higher level. And so if we can get these kids to grow, it will heavily impact our overall report card score. So it is not just kids that are not meeting proficiency. It is, so you could have, your whole school could be proficient, you still have a bottom quartile or a target group, if that makes sense. And then the on track to graduation measure is chronic absenteeism for everybody, so your, your attendance. And then depending on your level, you have one of the following measures. So high school, the second measure is graduation. Elementary, the second measure is third grade English Language Arts achievement. So that score technically gets counted for you twice. And then middle school, it's your eighth grade math achievement score. So again, that score is being counted twice. So all four of these data points add up to the overall score. Just so you guys know, Kate explains this better than any other kind of game. Try my best. I don't want it to feel like confusing. It is confusing, I just want, but I, it, there, there, it's important to understand where the numbers come from. I can't always explain exactly why they chose those measures um as a state, but those are where the, that's where the information is coming from. We have a number of celebrations. There, there are two boxes on this that have links to those documents. One is the press release that David helped uh push out when the scores and the report cards became public. The other one is um information displayed in the next couple of slides, but in a more concrete fashion. I think on this slide, the things that I want to point out are a couple uh huge celebrations. Every school in our district meets or exceeds expectations. It's a pretty big accomplishment, every single school and our district as a whole. Um, so huge celebration for everybody's work and collective work as a district. We had some individual schools make some really big gains this year um and had some huge celebrations. And uh we have um a school Cooper is significantly exceeding expectations, um the highest rating category that the state has. So I think some big celebrations uh to make sure that we are acknowledging the hard work that everyone is doing. This is just a layout of the scores over time. Again, we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples when we look at different schools based on their um achievement and growth scores. But I think it is a celebration as you look historically across time. And as a reminder, because there was no achievement data in 1920, there were also no report cards for that year. This is just graphical representation of that same information by school and district. And I think the, the main point is we have all this information, we can celebrate, but the now what? And the now what is really our continued work with our strategic plan, our continuous performance report. I'll be back in January to give you an update with our scorecard and some metrics that we're able to add into our scorecard in the first iteration. And then really the work is to support buildings um with their shared leadership teams and the continuous improvement efforts at the building level, which are contributing to our overall district success. So that was a lot of statistics. Please take a look at it. If you have questions, please ask. I think it's important, I think it's an important awareness um that all of these report cards exist publicly on the website for all districts across the state of Wisconsin. Um, but if you have questions, let me know. Any work or achievement?
Just happy that you're doing this. Not us. No, you do.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Um, that is all, Senor Presidente Olson. I think that's all, Mr. President Olson. Okay. Policy and Rules Committee, shall we?
All right, I have several action items tonight. Um, administration proposes approval of changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations. First reading of policy 0100, definitions. Several definitions have been updated to make them more current and a new definition of school district classifications has been added.
Motion to approve. Flag it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I have a, motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Next one is first reading of policy 0144.5, Board Member Behavior, Communications and Code of Conduct. Clarifying language has been added to several provisions as well as a direct reference to conflict of interest.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Kyle, do you have any insight, are these just all basic updates or? Yeah.
Neola will push out these updates if districts have asked for some things, um some Neola districts, or if they're seeing like a trend, obviously if there's statute changes, things like that, they'll make those recommendations. So they just kind of want to keep them.
Statutory case law and.
Yeah.
Various liability reasons that they read because they're seen in multiple states. And so they're keeping an eye on kind of what the trends are aside from what the laws.
They do.
They make their recommendations and then typically we review them internally to see if we agree or if there's something that's unique or different that we're doing culturally here in our district that would make that policy inconsistent. So they're usually vetted in advance, we don't just sort of blindly accept them.
I'm going to have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. First reading of policy 4140, Termination and Resignation. This revision is recommended by Neola to provide a comprehensive policy. This policy change is consistent with practices and policies across Wisconsin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Maybe did you want to add it all to the action?
No, just that this um came forward as a Neola recommendation. Um, but we had also had some conversations recently with CISA 12 districts and recognized very quickly, we're the only district that didn't have this policy in place. And so when the recommendation came forward, it made sense as to why we're moving forward with it, so.
Other discussions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. First reading of policy 5112, Entrance Age. This policy is updated to reflect the current state of the law, which recognizes the parental right to opt out of immunization and to file a statement regarding this choice in lieu of immunization records. Appropriate legal citation is also added.
Motion to approve. Second.
There any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carries. First reading of policy 5464, Early Graduation. This policy is updated to provide additional options for the evaluation and approval of early graduation requests. It also is updated to specify that a student who graduates early but is still participating in district programming or activities remains subject to the requirements of the board policy and other rules.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we don't see that often though, do we? For activities, for instance, or any other of our activities?
Through the WI, they cannot compete if they're high in school. So many kids will come if they're in a winter sport, if they graduate, they have to be done on that date. So uh that usually changes there soon. So they can't technically from the WI do that now. I don't think we have a hard line for string music or any other, like kind of the activities portion, but athletics, they cannot.
Is there any other discussion? Right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. First reading of policy 8420, School Safety and Reporting of Crime Statistics. This policy has been updated to reflect the crime reporting requirements enacted by the legislature effective for the 2024, 2025 school year. This policy has been updated to reflect the crime reporting requirements enacted by the legislature effective for the 2024, 2025 school year. The law requires high schools to collect and report incidents as described. The first deadline to report is July 31st, 2025. The Department of Public Instruction has provided detailed guidance on the reporting requirements and the scope of district's obligation to identify, evaluate and report covered incidents. The guidance link is embedded into the policy to encourage consultation and a step-by-step process that, if followed, will constitute a good faith effort at compliance. A client alert is also included with this update that discusses this new reporting requirement and its many challenges in more depth. The policy title has been modified as well to more clearly identify that the policy includes the reporting requirements of the new law.
Motion to approve. Second. Kyle, anything on this?
Change requirement of law.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Last action item tonight, first reading of policy 9151, Use of Cameras and Other Recording Devices in Locker Rooms. This policy has been revised to include additional language concerning media presence in locker rooms and the prohibition of recording devices. The revisions specify guidelines for media access in locker rooms and clarify the options to prohibit the use of cell phones in any capacity within these spaces. Recommended for compliance with statutory requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
What's the enforcement plan?
We have this in our.